Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Pat Rowe is absent, excused. Please rise for pledge of allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. So this past Tuesday, we lost Robert Ryan, lifelong resident of Madison, in fact, a multiple-generation member of family of Madison. Died at the age of 93. He served in World War II in the Navy. Served on the USS Franklin, CV-13 class. Was a survivor of March 29, 1945 attack on the ship where over 800 crew were lost. That day, he earned the Purple Heart. Many people recognize Robert Ryan from his attendance, not only to Veterans Day, which was, obviously, we missed him this year, but Memorial Day, his brother Joseph lost his life serving our country in World War II. So moment of silence for Robert Ryan and his family. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 23, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
It's already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and a motion for the regular minutes of October 23, 2017.
I'll move them. Second.
Any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
October had five Mondays, so it seems like a long time since we've seen you here, three weeks in between. But in between those three weeks, we had elections. I want to congratulate Carmela Vitale on her reelection and John Hoover on his election. As tradition, councilperson-elect sits in on the executive session so they can get up to speed and when they're sworn in on the new year, can hit the ground running. So, John, you've been working hard, so we know you're already up to sprinting speed. We look forward to working with you. I had a very proud grandfather, many know him, he grew up in Madison. Raymond Baccolo announced the birth of his granddaughter because he thought the name was very special outside of having a granddaughter. But granddaughter's name is Madison Rose Baccolo. You'll probably be able to see her because she'll just be glowing with that Madison look. And a few weeks ago, we had Halloween. And for those that were downtown, probably saw, once again, an incredible event. It's whole weekend, Halloween hoopla, as I look back at John Morris, our president of the Madison Chamber, starting with the, we had beautifully carved pumpkins and trunk a treat right out front here. And then the parade on Saturday was a beautiful day. And if you haven't seen the parade in a couple of years, it has gotten so big that they start here in front of Hartley Dodge, go down to Green Village Road, come back to Waverly Place. The front of the parade is coming on to Waverly Place and the back of the parade has not left Hartley Dodge yet. That's how many children and parents with some great creative costumes were there. And then they went trick-or-treating with what seemed to be ours. I was wiped out just watching the kids go from store to store that day. It was incredible day. And another event put on by the Mayor's Wellness Committee was the first-ever fitness crawl. So some have misspent younger adult years, know the thing as a pub crawl, so this is a much healthier version of the crawl, where we visited the many fitness studios along Main Street. As you've seen, that we really have, as our downtown has been reinvented, we are a hub for healthy activities. And I want to thank Kerry Kluag of Drew University, he was leading it, and Jim Hollenbach, our chair of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign also. Just a couple little, I received a thank you note today from some of the people that were in the crawl. So it was one comment, "Dear Mayor, the fitness crawl was so great, best ever." That's a pretty good one, it's the first one. "Had so much fun working out in different gyms, must do it again." And another one, "Thanks, it was a great day." So I look forward to the Mayor's Wellness Committee doing that yet again. Tomorrow, some of us will be going down to League of Municipalities Conference in Atlantic City, where we will be working with other elected officials and professionals down there, learning about things we can bring back to Madison. But tomorrow afternoon, I'll be leading a workshop on Project Community Pride, because one of the things that the League allows us to do is take projects and things we do and share them with the whole state, because the last thing we want to do is have a successful program and keep to ourselves. So last year, we shared the chief executive council with the state, and tomorrow, we'll be sharing Project Community Pride. And hopefully, we'll see many other communities replicate that program. This past Saturday was Veterans Day. Last Wednesday, I went to Madison High School, where the second year in a row, they put on a very good and respectful veterans event. And it was very impressive to watch the expressions of the high school students as they listened to the experience of veterans. And then, in the bitter cold on Saturday, we had a great turnout at the World War I Memorial at Condorsa Way. And certainly, the cold did not dampen the spirit of those that came out to thank the Often in my role as mayor, people ask me, you know, "How do you do it? You've got a lot of things to keep going, you've got a job to maintain, how do you keep the balance, how do you make sure you're in the right place at the right time?" And part of the puzzle is November's Employee of the Month, Teresa DeVecky. She's our administrative assistant here in the borough, supporting Ray Cody, Jim Burnett, myself, and including, such as this morning, getting a little reminder that I had a meeting at 9:00, a wedding at 4:30, and a planning board meeting at 6:00, and an early council meeting at 6:30. So that's how the mayor is the right place, we have someone like Teresa behind me. So on top of that, she's always planning the events of retirements and other things here, the many proclamations that she writes and researches for. So we want to thank her for all that work. And she didn't know, she's normally telling me who the employee of the month is, she didn't know that, so that will be a surprise. And speaking of retirements, we did have the retirement of Michael Piano during the last three weeks. It was interesting, as I worked in my comments at his retirement, I don't know whether it was intentional or just a coincidence, but his retirement week coincided on the fifth anniversary of Sandy. And as I said that day, Sandy did not define Michael Piano, but it certainly reminded us how important his work was. For those that were here in Madison five years ago, you knew how well we recovered and quickly recovered this town. That doesn't happen with a hurricane one day and running like crazy the next day. That happens when you've been spending years maintaining the infrastructure in this town. And it's knowing how to repair things and where to go to get people back online. So we thank Michael Piano for his dedication, and we had a great suggestion on that day, and I didn't follow through on it, but it was suggested that in honor of Michael Piano, that we turn off the power. So I was thinking of 7:00 that night, when all the children were home doing their homework or you were having dinner, that we were going to shut down the power grid for 36 minutes, one for each of his years, so you could appreciate his work. But we didn't do it. But if you see Michael around town, please thank him for his dedication to our town. And Dennis, if you want to please come forward. So proclamation recognizing World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in 2017, estimated 53,670 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 43,000 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, it's currently the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer around by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 9%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it's generally in later stages, and 71% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. While 91% of pancreatic cancers die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 1,270 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2017. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death across the world. And whereas there is estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed in 2015. And whereas the good health and well-being of residents in Madison are enhanced by direct result of increased awareness about symptoms and risk factors of pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim November 16 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Borough of Madison. Dennis, thank you for coming to accept this and your work.
Mayor, council, distinguished guests, on behalf of the New Jersey affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, I'd like to thank you for your important contribution to this national fight against pancreatic cancer. Ten years ago, I lost my beloved Rosalia to pancreatic cancer, and over 50 years ago, my grandfather. I joined this group to help this cause to find a cure. Thank you again for supporting our cause and helping to raise awareness with pancreatic cancer. Thank you.
Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from Frank Russo and Bob Vogel regarding what is going on with our construction office. Safely Construction completed the King's Road sidewalk and light conduit improvements between Prospect Street and Maple Avenue. Special thanks to Madison Electric for working with the contractor to assure the conduit foundation and pole locations were completely correct. Safely also completed punch list items for the 2017 road construction work. The construction of the MRC rebound wall is nearly completed, it just needs fencing, grading, and cleanup activities, which will be completed as soon as possible, depending on the weather. There are plans being made for Plain Street and specifications for Water Main and reconstruction. They're now underway to be done. Contracts and bonds from the general contractor, Joe Med, for the Central Avenue Water Main replacements are also being prepared. Greenwood Avenue Phase 1 plans and specifications were reviewed by NJDOT in order to authorize bid in February. Additional improvement to the 124 Greenwood crosswalks were recommended by the state. The plans for the 2018 road reconstruction projects are now being drafted in preparation for bids in February. In addition to Greenwood Avenue, which is bid separately, the plans include Crestwood, Rosewood, Kensington, Plain, Central, and possibly Glenwell Road. From Department of Public Works, as usual, the mechanics are always repairing and servicing something. So they're servicing grass and leaf equipment, which is very important right now. All the tools are being maintained. They've had to work on DPW vehicles. They have repaired and serviced police vehicles, and the senior bus needed repairs, and they service leaf loaders as well. The Parks Department is still cutting and weeding lawns. They're maintaining all the parks for cleanliness, and they have had to line and maintain some of the recreational fields. I think that they're about finished with that. Collected, misrecycling, and yard waste. They set up for Veterans Day, and of course, they've assisted with leaf removals. The Roads Department manages the leaf removal, and they assist at the Water Department as well. And the Sewer Department, they take care of their daily operations and maintenance of all the lift stations. They're doing annual sewer cleaning schedules. There is a sinkhole repaired that needed to be done, stormwater maintenance on Noe Avenue right away, and that, and they also will help with leaf pickup. I did receive a thank you note from the Garden Club of Madison, and it says, "Please extend a heartfelt thank you to every member of the council for approving our use of the magnificent Hartley Dodge Memorial for our show. What a venue to showcase our beloved Madison." So it was a wonderful evening, and we're looking forward to 2020, so please don't miss that. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Landrigan.
No report, Ms.
Finance Borough Clerk, and if you also have Health, Ms. Bailey.
I do, Mayor, thank you. From the Finance Department, as you probably know, in the past, a municipal budget's not like a family or business budget, that can easily change throughout the year. It is better described as a spending plan. Each department must predict their financial needs for the year, and those amounts can't change. However, the New Jersey Budget Statute does allow for budget amendments where excess funds from one budget line can be transferred to another, and that process is permitted in the last two months of the current budget year and the first three months of the following year. Tonight, we have Resolution 282-2017 is an example of this budget transfer. And a second financial housekeeping project will occur at the next council meeting regarding capital ordinances. Every year, the administration requests the cancellation of capital ordinances that have been completed. These typically excess funds associated with those projects, and by canceling the ordinances, those funds can be unencumbered and placed back in the capital improvement funds and spent on new projects. And this will occur on November 27. From the Health Department, the Board of Health introduced an ordinance that will amend Chapter 218 of the Borough Code, nuisances, to address invasive plant species. The public hearing will be November 21 at the Board of Health. Flu shots are still available at the Health Department, please call for an appointment. And Madison Health Department's annual free rabies clinic will be held Saturday, December 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. This year, it is in a new location at the Department of Public Works Garage at 34 John Street. The last installment of Parenting Workshop is scheduled for November 15. November is Diabetes Awareness Month, look for educational material on the website and at the public library. And an interest flyer for a possible Madison walking group will be on RoseNet website and on Facebook. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Walkwitz.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, start off by mentioning that they've been, they continue to be quite busy installing meters at the KRE, the, as you know, the new project in town. In addition, on King's Road, they've been installing piers and post lights, and that's between Prospect and Maple, so if you've been in that area, you've obviously seen what's going on. They also set a new pole on Cook Avenue, and they did that because the pole was broken in a windstorm. So I found that rather interesting, but I know we've had some strong winds, must have been hit very hard. And then finally, not to rush the season, but the Electric Department would like you to know that this week, they will be identifying town Christmas tree and intend to get it ready to be installed. And they'll also be putting wreaths up on post lights. As for the Water Department, they checked all the emergency generators, and where necessary, serviced them. The generator at Wellby unfortunately is in need of replacement. The chlorinators at the four treatment plants were also serviced and where necessary, repaired. The community pool has been shut down, I guess no one really cares right now, right, for the winter. And also, the ball field houses and the drinking fountains have been shut down as well. Goes along with finding a Christmas tree. Hydrant flushing program continues for 2017, 2018. As I've mentioned before, please, if you see your water pressure decline suddenly, or if your water's very cloudy, check out the window and make sure the Water Department isn't around. Because when they do this flushing, those are some of the impacts it'll have on your own water. It's very temporary, lasts just a few moments. And then finally, they had 11-meter installations and outside register installations. They've been installing radio transmitters that we've been talking about. I know our CFO will have a little more to say about them, and that is an ongoing and very important project for both utility departments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Well, despite the flock of very nervous turkeys that we saw downtown the other day, Madison is getting ready for Christmas. The Downtown Development Commission spent last weekend wrapping all of the light fixtures downtown in red and white lights, and they will be turned on on next Friday for the Christmas parade, which will be going on. Hopefully, everyone will turn out. It's a great event. MACA is once again providing musical entertainment downtown on Friday and Saturday. And the Christmas Fund has begun, and so I'd ask everyone to be generous to the Christmas Fund. They support Madison residents, seniors, children, families, who might not be able to have a Christmas without our help. The Chamber of Commerce is rolling out an interesting new idea. It is Rosie, the Rose City Reindeer. Rosie will be ensconced in different businesses throughout downtown, and you can go and get a coupon and have it stamped every time you find Rosie. If you get eight stamps, you can go to Madison Pharmacy, or tons of toys, and get a toy. If you get 15 stamps, not bad. If you get 15 stamps, you get your name entered in a grand prize drawing, which will probably be a Chamber gift certificate. So it's beginning to look a bit like Christmas despite the warm weather.
Thank you. And two things I did forget to announce, one I should have announced when we talked about our re-elected and elected council member, that our reorganization meeting in 2018 will be Wednesday, January 3, at 7:00 p.m. So as last year, remember, we moved off of the New Year's Day tradition, we'll keep up that new tradition. So again, Wednesday, January 3, at 7:00 p.m., we will be swearing in Carmela Vitale and John Hoover, and thanking Bob Landrigan for his six years of service on this council. So put that in the calendar. And one other small thing, as I look across the room, always see familiar faces, and there's one face that's been attending council meetings for 70 years, who is not here right now, and that is Napoleon. If you look in the corner, we now have Abraham Lincoln, who's certainly a much better person to have looking over us, but Rodan Sculpture is now in the Philadelphia Museum of Art, celebrating Rodan's, the 100th anniversary of Rodan's death. So if you want to take a road trip, you can go check out the Napoleon Sculpture, and we're looking forward to the bus coming back home at some point. Any communications or petitions? Okay, we're now on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that's limited to either the agenda discussion item, which today's the Electric Utility Quarterly Report, or you may comment on any of the resolutions. Ordinances will have comment periods or any other topic you want to comment on, please hold that for round two of invitation for discussion. So if you want to take advantage of this one, you step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and then tell us the agenda item or the resolution you're speaking on, and then keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move up to Agenda Discussions, Electric Utility Quarterly Report. Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. As council has asked, producing a quarterly report on the electric utility performance. I'm not going to go through all the numbers here. The report will be available online, and we'll also make it available on the Borough's Facebook page, a link to that, I should say, and there's copies of it here this evening. Okay, thank you, Robert. So in any event, summary overall, I think is the most important thing I'm going to say this evening, which is, there are no surprises. The overall performance is in line with estimates that we talked about back in January, February, and March. It has been a cooler summer, I think everyone recognizes that. So that has resulted in lower collections. However, those lower revenue collections were offset by lower electric costs, which is line nine. So line five shows the collections, line nine shows the electric costs. So far, over $600,000 has been given back to customers in the form of a dividend, which council approved during the budget process. The dividend performance for May to September is in line with 1.5 million for 12 months. So when you see an estimate for the year here, a revised estimate for a year of an electric dividend of $925,000, that may seem a bit odd, but council voted on a $1.5 million electric utility to be given out over a year. The dividend started in May, so it's going to run from May 2017 until April of 2018. So no concerns there whatsoever. Because the revenues were offset by a reduction in the expenses, there's very little change in electric utility surplus. Electric utility surplus is something we'll talk significantly about. So the revised surplus estimates are virtually unchanged, that's line three and line four here down at the bottom. Electric utility free balance is an important factor, and we'll probably talk more about that during the budget process. I wanted to introduce it in this presentation here. I won't go over it too much, but ultimately, free balance is how much is available in surplus after the amount has been drawn out and dedicated to the budget. And that line is represented right here, this bottom yellow line here. Administration is recommending a $2.5 million electric utility free balance. This chart here shows fiscal strength of free balance in the municipal budget. That chart has been in the mailer that went out to residents last year and earlier this year. Same concept in municipal free balance versus utility free balance, it's how much of surplus is left over. And so there's been no concerns on that front. Back in 2014, 15, 16, free balance was quite low, but due to good procurement and good decisions by council, we've been able to bring that up to what we think are appropriate levels. I'm going to skip this, this is just more of a discussion of free balance, everyone's available to read it online if they want to. Annually, I'll always give council, in June, July, August, September, October, a residential rate comparison. We've done this in the past, this is for the average resident that spends 855 kilowatt-hours of consumption a month. And as you, what we do is we compare that to all of the municipal-owned electric utilities, as well the investor-owned electric utilities. Investor-owned electric utility is JCPN, PSENG, Atlantic City Electric. We broke it out into three different tables, which was done during the strategic planning process. There are municipalities like Madison that use surplus to reduce property taxes, Madison Milltown, Pemberton, Seaside, and South River. And there are municipalities that do not use the surplus for tax relief, Butler cannot because they serve more than one community and they're regulated by the Board of Public Utilities. But Lavallette, Park Ridge, Sussex, and Vineland. And then there are the investor-owned utilities. We take their actual consumption, crunch it through all the different rate tariffs that these companies offer, to give you a comparison that if you lived in Madison, your 2017 bill would be, monthly bill would be $159.94, and if you lived down south in the Atlantic City Electric area, your bill would be a few dollars higher, $163.14. It gives you an indication, this also gives an indication as to percent change 2016 to 2017. The dividend is the main reason why Madison's electric rate has changed, it's dropped by over- over 7%, which is the largest drop, rate drop, in the state of New Jersey over the past year for any electric utility. So I think that's good news. Any questions? I wanted to throw in water costs, because I was talking to Donna Carey, who works at the Borough of Madison with me in utility billing, and she lives in New Providence. And I said, Donna, bring in your water bill. I want to see what it's like compared to what a Madison's water bill is like. So these are the rates that Donna has to pay being served by New Jersey American Water. New Jersey American Water serves vast majority of New Jersey. It's the largest publicly-owned water utility. And the rate structures are very different. New Jersey American Water bills in gallons, we bill in cubic feet. But ultimately, I just wanted to show that Madison's annual cost for water for an average couple that consumes roughly 3,000 cubic feet of water a quarter is almost half, well, it's more than half, of what someone would pay in Jersey American Water's territory. Electric utility block contracts. As you know, we purchase block contracts from time to time. We purchased two in January and one in August of this year. I won't get into it now, but I'll make sure that we have online a more detailed explanation of how the block contracts fold in with spot market purchasing and our overall strategy. But this is a portion of what you saw on page two and page three under the expenses for electric capacity and transmission. This is the electric portion. I was talking to Councilwoman Bailey today, and she said, Jim, what's the breakdown on the energy mix? That's a great idea. So I researched that today to show that in 2017, 18, we are purchasing two blocks from Exelon and one block from PSENG. That's this section right here. Those are the costs of those contracts. And I did a breakdown of the energy mix of those companies and calculated it for us. And we, our electricity is composed of 55% nuclear energy, 33% oil, natural gas, coal, et cetera, 12% renewable, which is wind, solar, hydro, actually a small amount of landfill gas, methane gas that's used to power some generation. And so that gives you an indication. Next year, when we roll into the contracts with Exelon and Nexera, that's going to change a little bit. It's going to go higher on the renewables. Nexera has a lot of renewables in their portfolio, so the amount of renewables in this will nearly double. It'll be over 20%. So but maybe some people support nuclear. It clearly doesn't generate greenhouse gases, so that is an obvious plus. Real quick summary, the needs-based rebate, which is a rebate that council instituted back in 2014 for eligible residents, is one-time credited on the electric bill. The program is administered by the wonderful clerk, Ms. Liz Osborne, and Donna at the utility billing office, and the results are shown there. As you can see, we're about the same as last year. We had a nice bump up from 2015 to 2016. The rebate is still available until December 1. So we have a couple more weeks for people to be able to come in, and we encourage you to come in. It's needs-based, and there's a very simple application to fill out. This is the stuff that I promised to report on, but I promised not to talk about too much to anyone who really wants to go through numbers. Feel free, feel free to call me, email me. I'm happy to talk about this stuff. I won't bore you with details this evening. It shows the cash receipts that are coming in and the power, electric power costs. And then the second chart shows the electric kilowatt hours that we purchased in wholesale. We have a meter right at the beginning of where the electric line comes into Madison, before it starts to get distributed to everybody's home. That's the kilowatt hours that are coming into that meter, and then the amount that are billed through the Borough's billing system. A little bit different, because our billing system issues a bill on January 5, which would count as being in the first quarter of 2017, but that has kilowatt hours from 2016, so not exact. Doesn't exactly line up, but it's a good indicator of, and also shows the softness in the consumption of electricity compared to last year in the kilowatt hours, which flushed out in the revenue. Wanted to give a quick update on the handheld and automated meters. We have installed 50 automated meters at our top 50 customers. Each of our top 50 customers has a new automated meter. Those meters are very high-tech in that they are now currently collecting 15-minute interval data. Every 15 minutes that meter is collected and storing, the data on consumption and the demand is, what was the highest draw in that 15-minute period of kilowatts. We have also installed over 200 automated meters throughout town. The handheld device, which you see our senior meter reader, Jim Trimble, holding there, the handheld device is being fully deployed for all routes that are residential electric routes. We have 28 routes, and the reason we have 28 routes is there's 28 days in the shortest month of the year. And so today is the 13th, and Jim handed in book 14 or 15. So about the first of the month, he should be finishing up reading book one. About the 15th of the month, he should be finishing up or having handed in book 15, and that's how it works. So almost all the books, except the commercial ones, we're no longer reading with paper and pencil. So I'm happy to hear, to announce that. We will be working over the next few months to integrate the automated portion of that. In this picture, Ben is holding a Bluetooth device, and that Bluetooth device will communicate between the handheld and the meter. So Jim will not have to go into someone's house to read a water meter that has a new module on it. He'll be able to stand at the curb and press a button. Or he will not have to go in, or sit there and type the numbers in as he would have to on the handheld on an electric meter. He can stand there and press the button, and information will via radio read go right in to the handheld. Capacity and transmission, we're just going to be talking about this a lot over the next few years, because it's just additional costs are coming down the pipe, but I wanted to talk about it for a few minutes. The Borough's total cost of electricity is $10 million. That is just the toss, that is just the cost to purchase electricity. It doesn't include staff, capital expenses, and maintenance. Of that $10 million, 35% of it is not the electricity that's lighting that light bulb. It's payments that are going to companies to provide us with high-tension wires to get that electricity from the generation plant to Madison, and it's to have plants that are available on super-hot days when the grid says we need more electricity. They will actually have companies that have power plants that may only run five, six, 10 times a year, and on the hottest days of the year, they're going to pick up the phone and say, hey, Joe, fire up that power plant, we need more electricity. Can't store electricity as easily as you can store gasoline, so you have to have these plants available. That's the capacity cost. We've talked about it a lot. There's a website right there that talks about the cost of peak energy, and it's important. But I want to bring to council's attention the conversations that Councilman Wolkowitz and I and Administrator Cody were having with a company. We started them over two years ago, but it's starting to come to fruition. The Borough is looking to potentially install generation in Madison as one way to reduce the capacity and transmission costs. Capacity and transmission costs are calculated based on the five hottest days of the year. If we have a generator that's behind our meter, then we, and we turn that on, we'll basically be sending a signal to the grid that we're consuming less. On a typical year, we will peak out at 40 megawatts. If we install four megawatts behind the meter, the grid's meter is going to show 36 megawatts, and then the four megawatts are going to be running behind our meter or inside our distribution system. And by doing that, we're able to significantly reduce those costs. We talked about them being $3.5 million a year. If we did, were able to reduce it by 10%, it's $3.50,000. Problem is, designing, building, and maintaining those generation units is very costly and something that we don't have expertise in. So we are looking and talking to a company that is willing to design, build, and maintain a generation unit here in Madison, and then we split the savings. So it doesn't cost us anything, and we get a portion of the savings. It's very early on, I just want to give you a heads up on this, but we've talked about this in the past. Seaside did do this. They actually bought their generators, and they're wonderful not only for reducing costs, but during Hurricane Sandy, Seaside was the only place to have electricity, because they had their generators to turn on. I just want to give you a heads up that that's something that we'll be working on. I'm likely going to come back to council asking for the creation of what I'd almost call a blue-chip financial team, to sit with Ben and I and Ray and go over the financial aspects. It is a complex, it is, it is a complex concept, but once you understand it, it's not that complex. So want to have some people on that committee of council, if it seems appropriate, to review the financial aspects of this possible option. We would be doing it through a competitive bidding process. We're not going to select one, we're going to have an RFP process, and that would be happening probably over the summer, over the summer into the fall. So that is it for the report. Are there any, any questions?
Questions for Jim? Maureen?
Yeah, the cogeneration. Would we, would we work out an agreement with the company that builds it, that after 30 years, we would take control, or would it be in perpetuity that we were sharing it?
That's an excellent question. The financial models that we've been working with and the company we've been talking to say after 15 years, we could purchase the asset at a lower market value, continue with a relationship with them, but the asset would be paid off, so the amount of revenue that we would get would be much greater, because their investors have already been satisfied. Option three is, we don't like it anymore, take it away. So we'll have an option of flexibility. It won't be 30 years, it'll be 15 years, and those typical generation assets can last 30 years, so they're going to want us to keep it. And I think during the negotiation process, we're going to make sure we have the option to keep it at a very low clip.
And most likely, this will be generation and not cogeneration, because we don't have the use for the heat.
Yeah, so cogeneration is a term in the industry that says you're generating steam, that steam, and the heat can be used as an offset. Hospitals and other large facilities can use that heat. We don't have a user of heat that can take the cogeneration, so we're just generation, not cogeneration.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you very much for a great report, and as you mentioned, this will be online, and I think if you look at the block contracts, given a homework assignment to our residents, you can see how we really have done a great job on your leadership and with Ray and our professional team behind there in getting good contracts that prior to this, we used to commit to a block at a fixed price, and so we could have been committed, if you look at May 9, the Exelon contract in the second column, we could have been committed to $51.50 for a longer time, as opposed to buying that last block at $33, and then you see how it goes out there, so.
We were happy when we got the low.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. We now move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance 42-2017 was scheduled, that's scheduled for hearing, was introduced and passed by title at a meeting of the council on Wednesday, October 11, 2013, 2017. Ordinance 44 was introduced at the meeting of October 23. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 42-2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase windows and related improvements to the city.
I open the hearing for ordinance 42. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Yeah, I want to make a comment. You know, we have a new director of senior services this year. She's been doing a good job of looking at what is necessary to improve that building, and this is one of the things that she came across, and I have to say, you know, this is great. This is, you know, it's the safety factor. The rooms will be brighter and lighter, so I want to say to Sarah Kefres, she's doing a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 42-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Note that ordinance 43-2017, the item was removed and the number retired, so call up ordinance 44-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $41,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for radios for the fire department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 44. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 44-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Maureen?
I just want to point out that this $41,000 is to replace the worst radios that we have at the fire department. A grant was applied for and denied to replace the entire radio system in the fire department, and the fire department has engaged a consultant, and they will be going after that grant again next year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
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 I declare ordinance 44-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. We are now on to the second of two discussion periods. This is when you may comment on anything. Please step to the microphone, keep your, write your, state your name and your address, and write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes if possible. At three minutes, I do give you a one-minute warning. At four minutes, we then...
You have something else.
Yep, that's right.
Hi, I'm Barbara Hughes. I live at Glen Wild Road, and I do want to talk about litter. I do want to talk about litter, and I know most of you all, but this is still a little nerve-wracking. So I want to start by saying, we went to Ireland this summer. We stayed in Dublin, which is a beautiful city that people are very, very proud of. We stayed right on the canal, which is just a really great walking trail, and yet, the canal was full of cans and bags and litter, and it was clear that it had become, they were used to it, the citizens, and it had just become a place that they would just chuck litter into. And I think that raised my awareness, and when I came home, I started looking around the streets, and I noticed there is litter in Madison, too, like quite a bit, on sort of the throughway streets. And I started picking up litter when I was walking my dog. So I live on Glen Wild. I do just Glen Wild, Green Village Road, Hillside, and Crescent. And I thought I would do that once, and then I wouldn't have to do it again. I do it like once a week. I went out this morning, or I went out this afternoon. This is on that walk, this is...
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, it's a lot. So I guess I want everyone to be aware and to kind of start looking around, because I do believe that if we get used to the litter, people will just think, oh, it's okay. Because people literally chuck things out their windows. I mean, I haven't seen people chucking them. I pick up what they're throwing out. So I guess my ask is, you know, I grew up in the '70s, and in the '70s, there was a big shift, because it became, there were ads on TV, there were ads, you know, it became socially unacceptable to litter. It became socially unacceptable for litter to be around, and I feel like maybe we're shifting back a little. Because I've also seen, like, on the Madison Parents Facebook page, talk about, like, a lot of litter at Dodge Field and stuff, and I just wonder if we could have some kind of Pride in Madison or Make Madison Beautiful campaign, if we don't have it in the budget to have somebody who goes around and picks up the litter. So that's, that's all that I wanted to say, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Barbara. So it's a very good topic. I think we will put that maybe as a challenge, whether it's Environmental Commission or DDC. I know it's beyond more than just a downtown, but the campaign of, you know, being aware and, you know, we are proud of this town, and it does hurt us if we have to go around picking things up. So we'll keep this on our radar, and you weren't nervous at all. You did a great job, so.
I'll take my card.
Thank you. Okay, Jesse?
Jesse Esposito, Community Place. One of the reasons that I was so late is I've been trying to print up this picture of trash. This is a little more than that.
May I just come show you the picture? I couldn't print it up.
Okay.
I don't want to deal with this anymore. I don't want to deal with this anymore.
Yeah, yeah, we should, you have to send to the clerk because anything you present here, we have to have it public. So for those in the audience, it's a, it's a dumpster overflowing garbage cans and.
Mattress.
Yeah.
Garbage up and down the street. As I had stated earlier at one point, I still have a parking issue with the Community Place. One of the biggest issues, and I thought these kids, you know, like, the kids that live there are fine. It's, it's become a fraternity house across the street, and the parking is out of control. But the garbage has gotten to be out of control as well. I went to the health department. I did complain to them. I did ask them to please have that removed because it's so disgusting. And I saw rats there. And I'm not living across the street with this situation. I just wanted to make you all aware of it, and I wanted to ask if there is an update on the signage for Community.
And any other questions or, I'll answer that in just a second, but just want to make sure we.
No, I just, I wanted to, like, I'll send this to you so you can review it, but it's really gotten so out of control over there. And I think the homeowner is so out of touch with the reality of the situation there that he just, he doesn't pay any mind to it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jessie. So we'll make, we'll follow.
We're waiting for the survey from the health department, and we have to do a subdivision when we have the survey.
So for those that, since Mr. Cody doesn't have a microphone right there, we want to capture it. So the update on Community Place, we are still waiting for the final survey from the Housing Authority. Once that is presented to us, the property will be subdivided, and the Community Place extension will be transferred over to the borough, which then puts it, even though we've been sweeping it already, the parking regulations can be extended there. And we will touch base with the health department to make sure that they're, they follow through on the garbage issues, especially if rodents are involved. So, yeah.
Yeah, there's everything.
Yeah. Thank you, Jessie.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction to ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for November 27. Will be published in the Madison Civil Post. All the public board may develop measures of public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 45-217 for first reading, and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison rescinding chapter 135-9 of the Borough Code and title, parking of recreational vehicles, permitting recreational vehicles at the public works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 45-2017.
Second.
And just to help the public understand, right now, we've had a policy of allowing recreational vehicles, RVs, et cetera, to be parked at public works. We are in the process of redoing the master plan, including dealing with wetlands issues there, trying to come up with a better recycling center. The electric utility needs a new building and other projects, and so it's just come to the point where we can't, don't have the space to have that happen. So that's why this ordinance is coming through. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
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 Order 46-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for 2017 sanitary sewer improvement program.
Mayor, I move ordinance 46-2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
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 Call up ordinance 47-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $320,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Elmer Street Storm Sewer Improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 47-2017.
Second.
Council discussion? And just, this has been an ongoing issue with Elmer Street, and so this will really help with flooding in that area. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
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 Call up ordinance 48-2017.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison authorizing the private sale of certain property owned by the Borough of Madison, not requiring public, not required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA 48:12-13B.
Mayor, I move ordinance 48-2017.
I'll second.
Council discussion? This is a small lot on King's Road, just east of the overpass. It's been a lease situation and is surplus, and the adjacent owner will be purchasing it. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
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 Right. Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a special motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure supported by certification of availability of funds, any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions, R278-2017 to R299-2017.
I second it.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
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 There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
The deterrent fund at $456,312.60. The general capital fund, $116,508.04. Electric operating fund, $665,525.18. And the electric capital fund, $1,275 even. Water operating fund, $28,794.79. Water capital fund, $18,200. And the trust set, $173,372.61. Total is $1,459,981.77.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Yes.
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 There is no new business.
So I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
John Coleman, 9 o'clock.
I know.
Yep.
This speaks a lot.
Well, if it was if we had smaller numbers for the voucher, we would have been, right before.
Don't listen to this, Ben.